So the bottom of the board here is Old Colony to the left. I'm going to call north the top of the sheet, so I can... So to the west is Warren and to the east is Two Butters and to the north are housing. Basically, when I got brought into the project, I've got to give you a little history for anybody that's new on the board. We're looking for 56 units. We reduced down one time and then in another design review, we shifted the building around on the site so that we could provide more space in here, more space on the corner and a green space here on the Warren Ave side or the west side in order to soften up the impact of the building on the street. We moved, as somebody earlier had stated, we moved the entrance and the exit. One of the Butters had said they were worried about cars exiting onto Warren and the headlights and the night travel. So we made Warren Ave entry here at the north, a one-way exit, a one-way entrance and the exit from the property on Old Colony here on the south. So any exiting traffic, any headlights at night will be on opposite side of the street. We, I'm gonna, Mike Joyce is here, does civil engineer, but I'll just talk briefly. We have a drainage system in the back of the building that's designed to capture the water coming off the site and hold it there and disperse it into the ground plane. Michael will elaborate that a little further. He'll go over to this board and I'm going to try to point, direct you around the building. This is the Old Colony Ave, the front facade, which was what we're calling the south facade. And this, this is the corner, what you'd see on the corner of Old Colony here and Warren here, we have an open plaza, trying to keep the sightlines down around the corner for traffic and give us space for people to congregate if they want to talk to me. And then on the Warren Ave side, this elevation here, which you'll note that we've used some things that are metal, these metal balconies, and we've introduced this in response to comments we received a year and a half ago to provide open space and more uniform one-bedroom units. Inside the building, we're looking at 36 units of one-bedroom and we have both accessible units and three-bedroom units. We have a total of four three-bedroom units. We have, I believe, two accessible units. They're located in this corner here. They have access to the elevator. The building itself, the mass, the building is four stories of housing. There's one floor of garage parking or understructure parking and then the mass you see here is the elevator and by, under our law, Massachusetts, I have to have an overrun for the elevator in case it goes past the floor, so it doesn't do damage to the car. The building itself, the design you see is a, is a stone base, which is shown in these materials and it comes around, wraps around the whole base. And then we have a, we're looking at cement fiber siding, which is hardy plank, everybody knows, and the red here, here, and then here is brick. So we're trying to break it up, scale it down to make it more friendly in the neighborhood. Let me clean this. I'll just walk you through the interior of the building, starting from, I'm going to start from the garage, structure parking. So again, Old Colony's here, we're calling it south. We enter the garage on the north side, we come in off of Warren and we come into here. Under the building, we have 34 spaces. I have four back here and four spaces here. My elevator's in the front corner, remember, on Old Colony Ave. And then we have an egress stair here and an egress stair here. Our goal is to get the most perimeter open, so when you look in the image down in here, we're going to try to have openings, there'll be grates there for safety, but the idea is to get the air moving through here, so we don't have to mechanically then bully. And then we go up the elevator, we go to the first floor, which is here on the left and the second and third floor plans are here on the right. So here's Old Colony again, itself. I have a small lobby vestibule space, I have a mailroom, my elevator here and my stair. My stair and my elevator go up above the, the housing, one story, to give me the overrun and give me access to my roof for service. And then I have my handicap units here in this corner and I have my, I'm gonna, everything else is one-bedroom. So my four, uh, three-bedroom, my four three-bedrooms required by state is in this back corner here and they're stacked up. The second floor is more of the same, we've got laundry rooms in the building, try to give onsite laundry. We have a small office space in one of the floors for B and D property management for the rentals. I think parking, we got a 95% ratio for parking. The building is square footage-wise, 38,920 square feet. That's all of the levels of the building and the site is 17,680 square feet. I've got my cheat sheet here that I brought. I guess I'll let Mike and Jack Kelly to talk to you about traffic and the civil issues, the water, stormwater and moving easement, et cetera.
We're going to tell them, tell them, solve this traffic here. We did submit a full traffic report earlier, but I'm just going to highlight some of those and some of the findings from that, we'll begin with the findings we were. We had machines down at both Old Colony and Warren. Old Colony carries about 400 vehicles per day. Warren carries about 420 vehicles per day. We also trapped, observed and recorded all the returning traffic volumes during the morning and evening peak hour at three intersections, Standish at Warren, Warren at Newton and Warren at Old Colony. And we did the, the existing traffic, we increased that for the normal growth and we add onsite specific traffic volume. The 40 units will generate about 23 vehicle trips in the morning peak hour with five in and 18 out and during the evening peak hour, the 40 units will generate 40 trips with 26 inbound and 14 out. The levels of service in terms of operating conditions that you quantify, they range from A through F with A being free flow to F for, on critical conditions being at capacity or over capacity, actually E is at, at capacity, but they range along the service. Standish at Warren, every movement was an A level of service, existing and for pole and projected, both the morning and evening peak hour. Warren at Newton was A in the morning and an evening for all approaches. Warren at Old Colony, Old Colony was an A level of service during both peak hours. Warren was at a D level as in Bob in the morning peak hour and an A in the evening peak hour and that was on the both existing baseline with the normal growth, but without the new traffic and with the new traffic. So the levels of service did not change by adding this traffic to those, to those conditions. And that's pretty much a, you know, I'm going on and on with them, but that's what we did.
So you're saying even, even rush hour, Old Colony is still an A?
That's correct.
Do you factor in the school traffic?
Oh, 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 you'll get your chance. Everyone will get a chance, everyone will get their chance.
Where's the report? Is that in your office?
Yeah, man, we'll get to you. Wait your turn, please. You're going, anything else?
That's, that's pretty much it.
Any questions, Chuck, buddy? I do, I just, I just think it's, an A is a designated, but that's the other guy, so you must know. It seems like it'd be worse than that.
It's because we're all in town.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Michael Joyce from Joyce Consulting Group, civil engineers of the project. Go over existing site conditions really quickly and then install more design. So the existing site currently, we have Old Colony Ave, Warren Ave, the existing industrial building here, the, an existing four-family, an existing four-family home. The properties, the two four-families are accessed, we have shared driveway to the center. There's parking along, along the rear, industrial properties access through a shared drive and there's a garage below in this corner here. The general topography of the site is the high point up in this corner drains down to the low point, which is an existing catch basin here. As an existing drainage easement to benefit the city running through the site has an 18-inch stormwater drain running from, basically across this property to the locus property coming up and then splitting below the shared driveway. As part of the proposal, we'd be relocating that, so that's where all the stormwater runs today to those catch basins and that 18-inch drain to the city's system. New proposal would relocate the existing drainage easement from, is it come here, come along the back and out to Warren Ave. The existing easement's 10 feet wide, the city of Quincy had asked for a 20-foot wide easement at the rear in order to provide more access for trucks and whatnot if there was an issue with that 18-inch drainage pipe. So that's what we're proposing. Basically, the proposed stormwater is going to function essentially the same way, it'd be, the existing rooftop runoff will run into a roof leader system into a cul-de-sac system below grade. The cul-de-sac system will be two rows of nine, nine chambers, 18 chambers total. The surface runoff will run off to the lower area, basically in the same location as it is now, to an existing catch basin and that catch basin will tie into infiltration systems. Those will overflow into the existing city of Quincy drainage system during large storm events and outlet to Warren Ave and the city system. The proposed drainage design forms with the mass of the morning handbook. Soil testing has been done, both test pits and soil borings to determine the soil classification and depth of groundwater. This has been reviewed by, the only change from the initial proposal was instead of, right now we have two rows of nine chambers of cul-de-sac. Before we had three rows of six chambers, so still 18 chambers, just a slightly different alignment in order to allow for the, before there were three rows here, in order to allow for the additional, in the rear, we tightened up that system. In addition to that, will be new utilities, new fire service, water services, gas service. The existing sidewalk will be reconstructed. As mentioned before, there'll be a one-way entrance driveway here, parking below and then the exit comes out here, there's parallel parking along each side of, one side of driveway. The exit onto Old Colony Ave. This project has been peer reviewed, first time around by E S W Moore and Jim White. We went through about three renditions of peer review. DPW's also reviewed it twice in the past. I sat down with Chen Wednesday of last week, he reviewed it. He had one, one, he had a couple comments, but his main comment had to do with groundwater mounding in relation to the footing of the proposed building and I'm confident we can address that, so I'm glad, I'd like to hand it back.
Thank you.
That's our presentation, so I'll turn it back to the board. I just do want to make one note before we wrap up. At last week's city council meeting, April 18th, the city council approved by an eight-to-one vote a zoning amendment to require affordable housing, multifamily developments in downtown Quincy, which was a significant change. I was actually at that meeting on another matter and there was considerable testimony from residents regarding the need for affordable housing. This particular project, well, not downtown, is a project that not only provides affordable housing, but also provides, you know, moderate income workforce housing of the type that it seems like the city council feels is necessary in Quincy. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, Joyce? Leg up in the DPW, April 20th, 2017, Warren Ave, Old Colony Ave, project case number C1738, review the similarity above record project at comments average followed. Proposed infiltration system is within 10 hundred feet of the building, perform a mounding analysis and provide required calculations, also show the extent of the groundwater mounded on the diagram. If anything is further, please advise. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please step forward, state a name to the address, name and address.
Mary Jane McGowan, resident of, owner in the second one place condominium since 1984. And what I am against in this, in this particular project are the 10, what is it, the 10 red-restricted units. I think they're doing a lot of ragtime, the way they describe it, because to me, the red restricted is a dog whistle for welfare in section eight, despite what our friend, the lawyers said, if the state has its hands in this, those units are going to go to section eight. What section eight means is that it's going to be increased crime, decreased property value, and it's sort of like a slippery slope. Already in Quincy, we're going to be having the marijuana dispensary, we have some halfway houses, we have some detoxes and what, I take the subway every day, seven days a week and in the past year, the incidences of bums on the subway, sleeping or just being general pests, has increased markedly. And before that, in the years before that, I always felt very safe in Quincy, I could fall asleep on the train coming back from work. And now it just seems like it's changed a lot. And I think that, to me, this, this is the slippery slope and at some point, someone, and you are the someone, I think, has to say, stop, we can't do this. And if I can have just a couple more seconds. I'm originally from New York and I was brought up in Brooklyn when it was very safe and then I left to go to school here and that was around the time Dinkins was the mayor, when the city just went right down the tubes and started off at the Kitty Genovese case, you can Google that one. And it took 20 years to bring the city back and Rudy Giuliani brought it back with, with his methods, you know. So that is my background with this. And I think it's wonderful that firemen and teachers and policemen can live in that building, but I think you've got to keep the welfare, the welfare of section eight out of this.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Next. Come on, let's go. People speaking, let's go. Anyone who wants to speak, they're up to the mic.
Good evening, Christine Baldwin, I live at 80 Standish Avenue and I have been for 11 years. I have a few concerns, I'll do this really quickly if I can.
No, 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 just, we just gotta, not wait for everyone to walk up here. Someone's next, just jump in.
Yep, I'm very concerned about the height of the building, getting no sun to the neighbors on Warren Ave. Adequate parking, there already is no parking on Warren Ave and Old Colony as well in that area. I live directly across from Warren, I can see everybody parking there all day and all night, I'm a home office. So I've seen the traffic go back and forth as well. I don't think the traffic is that minimal. I'm a home office, I've seen it for 11 years. There's more cars than that and my concern is that if there's additional parking, additional cars, the emergency vehicles which use Standish Avenue in that area to go through cannot get through if there's even more parked cars. So if they're going to add to the parked car problem, there's no more space on Old Colony or Warren or even Standish to put more parked cars, because the emergency vehicles will not be able to get through. So I'm putting it out there. Let's see, is there really that much demand for one-bedroom apartments in Quincy? I know most people, is, is there that many, lack of units available in the city? There's a lot of apartment buildings that are going up, are there that many one-bedroom, one-bedrooms needed? To me, it's a transient kind of process, because most people who are young couples like our neighbors are going to have children and how long are they going to be there for? They're just going there for a year, they're doing transition housing until they can find a regular house. A one-bedroom is just people churning and burning through the neighborhood. So my concern is that we're going to have maybe some younger couples, which is fine, but once they have children, they're going to be out of there. And most of the families in that area have children. The Asian families will not be serviced by that, because they all have kids and they're, one-third of our neighborhood is Asian. They're wonderful people, but they all have children. So I'm wondering how one-bedroom is going to serve, what kind of people are we, you know, a single fireman will have a couple, they'll have two cars and there we go, that's the problem. So you just, I don't understand who you're looking for as an audience to expect to kind of live in the building.
I think they're looking at the 50% divorce rate.
Well, they are. I agree, thank you. Thank you, they're looking for a high divorce rate. Let's see, what else? The height of the building, that is a, my, my brothers are both architects, that is a monstrosity building, it does not fit in the character of the, the whole neighborhood. I know there's a storage thing across the way, honestly, it's not even that tall. So my concern is that, how big are these one-bedroom apartments? They look like hotel rooms to me. Are they 500 square feet? Can you imagine that?
I put it at 500 square feet.
Okay, so that's a very small couple with no kids and maybe a tiny dog and that's it. How long you can live in a 500 square foot house?
All right.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
So my name's William Harden, the mediator of utter of all three of these properties. I'm not going to talk long, because we've already been through this once.
Name your address, please.
126 Old Colony Ave.
Thank you.
This filtration system, they're worried about this water flood and the footings of this building, my 12-foot deep basement's like 10 feet from this water filtration system. The other thing is, I'm listening to you folks, I talk loud because I'm not a hearer, but they, you ridiculed some of these other folks earlier about the guy adding a floor. This thing's six stories with a parking garage. They're, they're two-story buildings and now, this is, with a parking garage and they're off on the top, they all, but this thing's six stories. They, they did a, they did a sun study on this, they, they sent it to my house on the computer and this cast my house in darkness for half the day. This thing is just huge. It, it, it's as simple as that. They, they don't have parking for this. The whole thing, I'm so aggravated about, I can't even concentrate. It, it's just way overboard. This traffic study, since they paved Old Colony Ave, it's a cut through now, before there's craters and it's an empty road down there. Now that they paved Old Colony, all they want, the cars are cutting through off of Beale Street to go hit Hancock Street to avoid the lights down on Papa Gino. It's just non-stop cars going up and down. Warren Street, yeah, it's kind of quiet, it's a little side street, but Old Colony Ave, I, I'm watching cows when I'm out there in my yard doing 60 now down the street, cutting through there to go over to Hancock Street. The thing's just too big. It just has no bearing in, in the statehood. You know, they, they keep talking to people, oh, you know, the Brancaldos are saying, Titan Roofing across the street's a big building. This is twice the size, three times the size of Titan Roofing and that's the biggest, Titan's probably one of the biggest ones in the neighborhood, this is like three times the size of that. Granite City Storage is like, it's like two stories and it's not even as big as this. I, I can't believe we've been here talking about this. I can't believe, that's all bizarre. I can't believe I'm here for a second time going over this.
Point's okay.
It's just that bizarre.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next.
Okay, Billy's right, we've been through this before, it's been a long process and some of the things that Ward has actually said to us during hearing, during hearings tonight, actually support what we're trying to say. First of all, it's absolutely huge. By the way, my name, I'm sorry, is Baycry Mondi, a little late, Baycry Mondi, at 55 Warren Ave. I'm on Warren Ave. I live, I'll be living right across the street from this, or should I say, let's put it nicely, if this goes up, and I've been in my home for 40 years, I'm divorced, a 25, single person, I have a three-bedroom house, that will depreciate the value of my home tremendously. I'm, I'm a senior citizen, I, if, if I'm going to ever sell my house, that's what I'm going to have to live on and nothing else. If this goes up, it's going to depreciate the value of my house. If I decided that someday I want to go before the board and say, I'd like to make my single family a two-family, you're going to tell me no, because they're already there. Thirdly, if this does go up, after 40 years of paying taxes in the city of, the city of Quincy, I definitely will move. I'm allowed to live in a home I'm happy in. I love my house, I love my little street. This is something that belongs in a big city. I moved to Quincy, I'm in this house, it's adorable, I put in flowers, the neighbors all love me, they come by, they love the flowers, they love the country aspect. This is going to change everything. Billy said the sunstight, that affects me as well to a certain degree. I also, like I said, I'm a gardener, I'm a member of the garden club in Quincy. Where my plan's going to go? The traffic, the traffic is already horrible, not just on Old Colony Ave, but on Warren Ave as well. First of all, you've got Eastern Nazarene, you have students going to Central, Central Junior High. You also have two additional gyms on Old Colony Ave, you know, not far around the corner from Warren Ave. There's two gyms, that means you have traffic, come in and go, come in and go, because people go into a gym for an hour and they leave. So you have all of that going on and like with Billy, we, you know, we've been doing this for a couple, a number of years now. You know, it's just too big, it doesn't belong in the neighborhood. Drive down Warren Ave. Think if you were in Warren Ave, you've lived there for 40 years and you've been admitted to the city for 40 years and now all of a sudden, this is what you're going to have across from where you live. I think the dumpster, we don't live in the neighborhood on Warren Ave, area of Standish and Old Colony. We put out a trash shell, we don't have big dumpsters. I think my understanding is the dumpster's going to go, Billy don't want it near him, I don't want it near me either. So you've got the dumpster issue. Also the fact that, yes, they've made adjustments that the parking comes out on Old Colony and goes in on Warren Ave. So now you've got all these cars down, Rob and Dyke, Warren Ave, take it a right or left or whatever they need to do to get the parking lot. I'm going to be sitting there seeing all these lights, I love sitting in my home, I watch my TV, I can see the sky, I see their little white houses, you know, their four families, but that's fine, they were there when I moved in. I can see the sky, I can see my own little trees in the eye and then the sky beyond there. This goes up, I see no sky. If I sit on my porch, almost on my eye level, we'll have no sky. That's not fair to me, I have a right to live there and be happy in my home. I'm not going to be happy anymore. I will have no choice but to leave my home and if I do, I'm not going to stay in Quincy because I'll be so disappointed with what's going on the last year and a half here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Janette Tulio, 38, Standish Avenue, Wallace. I think everything that's said is excellent and all good points. I'm looking at Standish Avenue and the traffic impact on the in and the out. In addition to Standish Avenue traffic, which is huge now and will just be impacted, I think more, is the fact that we have a middle school at the end of this whole area, children who do access through Old Colony Ave, parents who do drive their children. And if there is an exit coming out on Old Colony, it's going to affect that traffic footage, people going down to the tee, kids going into the middle school, parents driving youngsters. It does change, having been a lifelong resident of Standish Avenue, it's a huge impact on the neighborhood. And I guess those who have lived there for years feel the neighborhood is important. It's not Brookline, it's not waterfront, but it is a very nice neighborhood and I think we would like to keep, most of us, keep it intact and just beware, you voiced some concern about traffic as well, the parking, the tee parking, all of that. I think it's just going to make this much more complicated than it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jeremy Baldwin, I live at 80 Standish Ave, I've lived there for about 11 years. You all seem like nice, reasonable gentlemen and I can't imagine that looking at this, you can't realize how much this is drastically going to change the beautiful little neighborhood I moved into. I moved there because it's all one, two-story small family homes, but it's quiet, it's near downtown, but the bigger buildings are away from where we are now. This is drastically going to impact our neighborhood and change the entire field of where we live. Not to mention all the things that were mentioned before about traffic, traffic flow in school and safety of kids and all the rest of that and the type of apartments that they're going to be. I'm all for affordable housing and I'd be fine with this building being someplace else, but I think it drastically will break down the whole values of people that are going to live there and it will change our neighborhood forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Boris Yavchiv, 76 Standish Ave. My wife and I purchased there about a year.
Hey, get your name on, sorry.
Boris, Boris Yavchiv, 76 Standish Ave. I actually used to live in Boston and I moved away from Boston because I didn't want to be surrounded by this. That was a year ago. If this goes up, we're unlikely to be staying. We're thinking about having kids. You're, we're probably the part of the demographic that, that you guys are looking to attract here. That's not the way to attract us. The traffic, absolute, I don't know how you got to those numbers, so that's kind of a joke, complete joke. That was not even in the neighborhood of what I see from my porch, which overlooks Warren Ave. I mean, this thing is huge. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Stuart Schreier, I'm an attorney, my office is in Boston. However, I'm a Quincy resident. This is shocking and horrifying. Personally, you want to talk about moderate income people that need housing, nobody has bothered to mention that there are eight residential units there now that are probably not one-bedroom units, they're probably are probably not one-bedroom units, they're probably two-bedroom units, and those are going to be removed from the housing stock. Nobody's bothered to mention what those units rent for, but I'll bet you they're not $1,900 a month, they're probably renting out for $1,200 or $1,300 a month. Why are we tearing down eight units of housing? For example, one of the properties, 54 to 56 Warren Ave., is a low, it's a low-density multifamily zone. It's probably zoned, as it stands now, for a two-family, but prior to that, there was built there a four-family. So that already exceeds, they have a reasonable use of their property. They made a lot of hay where they said, "This was already approved once before." But when it was approved once before, this board was presented with a petition with 88 signatures on it, and that 88 signatures was ignored. There's no reason why if 88 people take the time to write to this board and say, "We oppose this," that this board didn't vote against it last time. So a couple of neighbors got together and hired me to stop that project. So I filed suit in Superior Court. And if you approve this, I will file suit again in Superior Court and stop this project. This is inappropriate, and I can't wait to get in front of a judge. Now, this document, it's maybe 25 pages, and it's not the be-all and end-all, but I'll give you this document. This is a sample guide to planning for a 40B project. I might not agree with everything that was said here. I might not agree that Section 8 people don't have a place to live and don't need a place to live. I don't care if a couple of Section 8 people occupy a few apartments in a building, a couple of people, two, three, four, are not going to destroy a neighborhood, may not agree with that. Poor people do need a place to live, moderate-income people need a place to live. This project isn't designed in accordance with the guidelines for a 40B. And again, this is only one person's opinion, but what do they show? For example, on a street with single-family homes, one of the pictures, shows a large 24-unit apartment building, okay? And they show that as not a good design. Below it, they show townhouses, where they get more units on the property, but it looks like the neighborhood. There could be a project that could be designed here that would fit in the neighborhood, all right? You might take down the eight units that are there, you might get 24 nice townhouses in there that would look appropriate in a neighborhood with singles, twos, threes, and two, four families, which are going away. But this is a sample, and if you look at it, the buffering that's offered to a single-family home from the new project, what kind of projects are approved for 40B? Look at the project that was approved, I think it was at Andover, 286 units for moderate-income people. But it was on a farm, it wasn't going to bother anybody. They took a farm, they put roads in, and they built a 286-unit, low and moderate income, 40B project. This is so close to single-family homes, two-family homes, and four-family homes, this is so close, it's unconscionable. It shouldn't even be talked about, but you have to talk about it because it's a 40B now. So I'm going to give you this guideline, and if you look through these pictures, they'll show you what they talk about. They talk about building typology, what types of buildings should you build in a neighborhood. You need to put in some low, moderate-income housing, because that's the kind of neighborhood we want to live in. We do want to live in a city that's inclusive. We don't want to live in a city of just rich people. If I wanted to do that, I'd move to Weston, or Wellesley, or some other town. I chose to live in a neighborhood with all kinds of people, I find it to be wonderful and charming. I don't want to exclude anybody, and I know you don't want to exclude anybody, but this project, where it's cited, is wrong. So if you want to take the time to look through this, just look through it. They talk about the type of architecture that you use for a 40B. Poor Mr. Haw. I've hired hydrologists before, I don't care what they say about the drainage, because when they wanted to move the town brook, Arlene Goodman's house was going to flood, and they had studies and studies, but you know, nobody took a tape measure out, the brook was only six feet wide, but on their studies, it was marked down as being eight feet wide, well, a lot more water goes through an eight-foot brook than a six-foot brook, okay? Mr. Haw is going to face an inundation, a flood, no matter how good their drainage systems are. When you put a lot of property under roof, that water doesn't go into the ground. Right now, you have the three buildings, between them, you do have some pavement. Here, 90%, where's the open space? If you cared about moderate-income people, would you want to live in this? Okay? If you look at the projects that have been approved as 40Bs, they come with grass, they come with trees, they show how to site the buildings so that the buildings aren't square each other to offset, so that there's nice walkways between the buildings. This is not an amenity that anybody's going to want to live in. It's going to be occupied after it's built because it's new, and then people are going to realize, you know, a 500-square-foot, a kid around, a 500-square-foot unit is a new form of birth control. That's what it is. Nobody's going to want to have kids. Who is going to have kids living in a 500-square-foot unit? Really? So a single person will move in, or a couple, and that's all that you'll have here, all right? You won't have, you'll have four units with families. Is that the kind of neighborhood you want to live in? Is that the kind of neighborhood you want to live in? I don't think so. I don't think any of these people want to live in that neighborhood. So I'd ask that you look through a sample guideline for 40Bs, showing how a 40B should be designed.
Thank you.
And where it should be cited.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John McPhil, 62 Grand Mall Road. That was excellent. This is one of the reasons I take these meetings, because every once in a while, the neighborhood stands up against a project, and sometimes, for some reason, it gets approved. So, you know, when you do appeal this, I look forward to the jury watching the video. Okay, now, I think they're using this chapter 40, you know, I would say totally just against this project, deny this, if they want to go chapter 40, do whatever, that's up to them. But one property is residential B, and the other two parcels are industrial B. We don't have any zoning for industrial, so it'll be good to see what a judge thinks about our zoning when this case actually gets heard. I don't think, you know, if, these guys are pigs, this is one of the piggiest projects I've ever seen.
I'm down.
No, but I mean, to, this is all about greed and money, okay? And it's really disrespectful to the people who've lived in Quincy their whole life, okay? This is 17,068 square feet, 40 units. 40 divided by 17,680 is 442 square feet per dwelling unit. That's even lower than the business C, but there are no rules. Actually, I talked to an attorney earlier, and he said, "When there are no rules, use the rules that are most restrictive." So if we were to use those rules, we could maybe use residential A in this case, but it's just a complete disaster. I mean, and this is the point I want to make about fair market rents. The fair market rent for a one-bedroom unit in 2017 is $1,372, okay? So Quincy Housing or another housing authority, they have the right to go 10% above that, so they could go up to $1,509 per month for that unit. So probably, there's a good chance that all 40 of those units, 10 of them will be rent-restricted, and then the other 30 could all be vouchers, because who would want to live in a 500-square-foot one-bedroom apartment? I mean, this is just so wrong, and it would, you know, it's just time for the zoning board to just say enough is enough and stop approving things, which, you know, I don't understand what they're trying to say. They're trying to say, like, "You have to do this?" You don't have to do this. This is one of the worst projects I've ever seen, and so, "Please deny this project," or, you know, I don't know, if you deny this, if you approve this project, I probably will stop coming up to these meetings, and you won't see me anymore. And everyone who wants to sell their house, I am a real estate broker, I'll lift your house for free, okay? Thank you very much.
Anyone else opposed on the side?
Evening, members of the board. My name is Joy Lester, and I reside at 44 Newton Avenue. I've lived there for the past 35 years, and I am opposed to this project. I do have a letter here from my neighbor who could not attend, so I'm going to read that into the record for you, for her. Her name is Irene Collier, and she lives at 42 Newton Avenue.
Once you give that to the clerk, she can read it in the record, we can read that in if you can hand it.
Okay, so you don't want me to?
Well, I want to read it first.
Okay.
Because I don't know if it came from her or dump, she said it did, but yeah, I don't know.
I'm not making that up.
I don't know, I'm just looking at the address. It's all the color. The other caller.
Okay, so, to continue, I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask questions of the presented to you, possibly?
Who me? That's great.
So.
Ask me all your questions, and I'll make sure they're answered.
I had a question about the traffic study, because I came down to the offices to review the file, and I do not see any copy of this traffic study that was referred to to the C. D. All of the other plans and drawings were there, but is there some other place that this traffic study can be found?
You must have it, John, I don't have it, and I looked for it, I don't have it at the time.
All I can tell you is I have done the traffic study as part of the initial.
I know, but I didn't hear.
It's not in the record, though.
Yeah, exactly.
I had presumed that that had been forwarded to you.
I don't have it, and that's something I want to see, I want to read, and I'm not going to read it and put it in two minutes, I don't think this board's going to.
We will get that traffic study.
Thank you. I'd like to be able to read that.
If we could move forward, I know that one of the gentlemen that spoke earlier referred to a resolution that was passed at the C. Council requesting affordable housing, and I have had several conversations with various councilors and members, including the mayor's office, his employees, and the mayor himself, who would like to see this type of housing development combined to the downtown area and to protect the neighborhoods like ours in Wallaston. Currently, we have several apartment buildings. There's three of them on Newton Avenue where I reside, and those are two-stories tall, okay? There's a couple more on Merrill Street, which is near the Nettulios and the Logans, and those are, I believe, only two-stories tall. And this similar one, I believe, Standish, also two stories. So to say that this fits in with the neighborhood is really inaccurate, I don't think it does. My opinion, many other people's opinions, it doesn't fit. An 80-foot building does not fit in with other 30-foot buildings. And I think the traffic issues and the parking are significant safety issues that the zoning board needs to consider. You know, you can't take a place, you know, two pieces of property that currently house eight families and the cars that go on with that and say, "We're going to put 40 units," and assume that that's going to absorb adequately. I also want to add that the apartment buildings that we do have in our neighborhood all have huge parking lots, with sufficient parking, where none of the cars are parking on the street. I don't see these plans accommodating that, and I think it's very unrealistic to think 32 parking spaces are going to be added for 40 units. And those same cars, those same.
38.
38.
Just saying.
Okay, thank you for correcting my answer. I just think that safety is going to be a huge issue with regard to the, the volume of cars that you're adding to a neighborhood that's already so congested. You're going to change the nature of this neighborhood, it's not going to be a friendly two-story, single-family, two-family, couple apartment buildings. You know, this thing is, is an abomination, it's just, it's not going to look right. I'm going to drive home and just look at that thing every day and be like, "Oh, my God, what is that doing?" You know, and I just think that it doesn't belong there. If you're going to build it in downtown Wallaston, you might get my support. You're going to build it in downtown Quincy, I'd get people's support. You already have large, high-rise apartment buildings and office buildings that fit the nature of this development. If you try to strong-arm your way into the neighborhood and use state legislation for affordable housing, chapter 40B, just to get your way, to strong-arm your way into the neighborhood, is a really bad approach. And I urge you and your owners and developers and investors to reconsider what you're proposing here, because it's not going to go through easily, if at all, if we have anything to say about it. And that's all I have to say tonight. I urge the board to vote against this, or at least consider the mayor's, Mayor Coach has a comprehensive traffic study that he's proposed for the entire city, looking at things just like this, what is development going to do to our neighborhoods? And I urge the board to, if you can't vote against this project, to at least postpone your vote until that study's complete and the mayor's task force on traffic can weigh in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last call, anyone want to speak? Ross Hall on the side? Opposed on the side, Ross Hall? If you're going to speak, come on up next. Come right up here, come on up, say you're next.
Is this in favor or?
Against.
Against. Well, I'm in favor, so.
Okay.
Elder people, they don't know whether the neighborhood.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
My name is Ross Nettulio Logan, I live on I. Standish Avenue, and I've lived there for most of my life. My feeling is some board needs to take responsibility for what a neighborhood is. Over the last few years, we have had a lot of impact. We've had a new motel that people can see from the backs of their houses. We've had central middle school that affects the traffic pattern. We've had that little rescue for drug addicts at the base, and, I'm sorry, Phoenix House, Phoenix House, sorry. And we really have not had a voice in what our neighborhood is, and people need to listen to us, both the mayor's office and the different boards that exist. This is a neighborhood where people have grown up, they've sold their houses to family members, and they've sold their houses to new residents from Boston or wherever, and we want to maintain that neighborhood. Yes, we have small units, and I believe the owners have some, two of them, two small apartment houses on Merrill Avenue, and that is a residential area. We've had some difficulties with the people who move in and who really don't maintain that, and the owners have listened carefully to us, and they have been very responsive. But when you have that onstrosity looking you in the face, I guess I have to say, again, as other people have, who's going to move into a 500-square-foot area? How long is the lease going to be for someone to live here? Is it going to be a monthly lease that actually people are near the tee so they can rent something for a month or two months and then move out? Are we going to get to know those neighbors the way we know the neighbors in the smaller apartment houses? Someone, some board needs to listen to us. I sat here so embarrassed this evening, everything that came forward, no one was listening to the people who had objections to it. Don't be the bully board, just listen to what's happening in the neighborhoods.
Last call, all our party members closed. We have some letters here that can be read into the record.
I'm not going to read the entire letter, but just the generalities of what's in here, and I'll identify the property owner if I go all right. I think it's, is it Irene Collier?
Irene Collier, yes.
Okay. Irene resides at 42 Newton Avenue, Wallaston, and her letter states that, for the same reasons with the drainage issue, with the amount of parking, and the traffic and flooding, that she would be opposed to the project. This is from David Daggett of 38 Newton Avenue, similar concerns, the structure went off in with the buildings on the neighborhood, the traffic and parking, and they're not showing up parking on the multi-unit, multi-bedroom units. During the winter, it's difficult to move around Old Colony Ave. Again, opposed, David Daggett. This is from Karen Yee and Patrick Yee of 37 Newton Avenue. This is from Karen Yee and Patrick Yee of 37 Newton Avenue. Similar situation. Serious concerns about the proposed, proposed or requested not be approved and not be approved as filed. The structure does not fit with the character of the neighborhood, which is single and multifamily homes, limited commercial properties. The largest is Eastern Nazare, continuing education campus. The applicant fundamentally underestimated the parking needs, given that it is common for two bedrooms to have three residents in their own vehicle. Again, opposed, Karen Yee and Patrick Yee of 37 Newton Avenue. This is from the condominium owners on, I believe it's 165 Oak Colony Avenue. And the same thing. Unit owners, their trustees, their regarding the plans. They strongly urge us to deny these plans. Our neighborhood is congested already. Eastern Nazare now is raised, New Woman's Gym, increasing traffic. Cars are parked on the corners. Anyone visiting complex will add to the parking woes for the neighborhood, and especially with the T station being closed in two years.
Yes.
Please keep this neighborhood that we can be proud of, do not turn this into another apartment-after-apartment building situation. Again, opposed, and that's 165 Oak Colony Avenue, all units.
Fifteen of them.
This is a letter from a counselor, Kristen Hughes.
Listen up.
Tuesday, April 25th.
Oh, leave, please.
To Jay Duka, Special Services. The application is Z, case number Z-38-54 to 56 and 60 to 62 Warren Avenue, 118 Oak Colony Avenue. Dear Chairman Ankenz and members of the zoning board, please read this into the record this evening in reference to the application, number Z-1738. Again, 54 to 56 and 60 to 62 Warren Ave., 118 Oak Colony Avenue submitted by Warren Place LLC. I understand the applicant is seeking a comprehensive permit to increase the gross square footage of the project to comply with the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency and Department of Housing and Community Development workforce. Housing requirements on the premises numbered four. 54 to 56 and 60 and 62 Warren Ave. and 118 Oak Colony. I have known the proponents for this project for many years, and they're one from people who have businesses in the area. They are great community partners to work with on a daily basis. In regards to the project, I am concerned about the density and the possible negative impact of the parking and traffic already in a congested area. While this is an industrial area with many businesses, there is neighborhood of network and a network of neighbors and families that reside there. I am most concerned about the negative impacts this project could have on their lives, as well as the impact on the businesses. I hope you will consider this as you listen and vote this evening. I have been contacted by several businesses and residents in the area concerned about these and other issues. I hope you will take into consideration these concerns in the testament of the people this evening when you make your decisions. Please make every effort to ensure any alternatives of mitigating factors are discussed if the board approves this project. Again, traffic and parking impacts in the neighborhood must be considered. I appreciate your time. And to drop you off, behalf of the City of Quincy, sincerely, Kristen Hughes, 1-5 Counselor.
All of part of the hearing closed. I even, I even, I looked everywhere for a traffic study. Did anyone get one?
No, I don't.
I never got one. I wouldn't even think of reading, thinking of this to begin with, without another traffic study. And ours, I want, I want. One from the city that says everything that Mr. Hughes... So... And there's another option there, looking at, that he gave you in the beginning, and it's to knock a floor off that. Something that we should look at, a traffic study would have left. And if he knocked a floor down, we have another hearing completely and talk about a new design, or come back and just... That's something, but I want to move this forward for four weeks. I want to look at a traffic study. Every one of us should look at that. And keep in your head, knock it down a floor. One story can have 32 units with 38 spaces. I'll get rid of it.
Mr. Chairman, just a question to whoever on the team can answer. To your point, if you knock it down, I read in your application, it said, "Should you consider prior to obtaining a comprehensive permit the use of any other housing subsidy program, the construction of additional units, or a reduction in the size of the site, you may be required to submit a new approval." Is that, would that be the case if you knock it down? Or had you already pre-discussed that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the member. We actually have discussed it with Mass Housing. And generally speaking, when you reduce these projects, there's not a full comprehensive permit review. Only if, if it's, you know, in some cases, like in this case where we talked about adding an additional floor, we would probably need to go back if we were going to add more units. Because if we added another floor, we'd have more spaces and essentially could add more, more units. So what we, by going down to the 32, we wouldn't, we would notify Mass Housing, and they would be...
They all say complicated.
Well, they went through the designing process here and approved it as a result.
Okay.
So...
So it's something for us to think about, which is right. So could I have a motion to move this again?
I just, I have one.
Any questions, please get ahead.
We approved this, the original project. And I understand that what the court, that it was rejected.
Correct.
And now you're coming back with another project. Could you tell us why, in, I'd like to see a form of why the project was initially advised was rejected, and what you've done to address the, other than the 40? Whatever, was that, is that the only concern that was...
Yeah, just, the court never heard the project on merits. We agreed to withdraw our application, which moved it the case.
And then you decided to vote for it.
And then we decided, yeah, decided to vote for it. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? No. Could I have a motion to May...
Continue.
May 23rd?
May 23rd.
May 23rd. And it might even be longer than that, but it should be done by May 23rd, I hope. Mr. Duka, we can get something the next week or so.
Jay?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We'll have his tomorrow, but soon we'll give us something, maybe in a week or so. Two weeks from the traffic...
Yes.
Yes. I'll see to it. All right. We can move it to the 23rd. There's some things you guys got to think about, what you want to do. Either get rid of it, drop it a floor, keep the same parking, and look at the traffic study, because half of the parking in 40 is just, is out of me. It really is. This is half a mile away, really. Like, 30 miles to the station. The station's going to be closed in nine weeks. It's going to be built.
Water treatment.
Water treatment, that's what I'm saying. So where do they go? And everyone talks about no parking because it's closed. You still got one bedroom, you still got at least one. At least, you got a couple of inches. Where do they go? I don't know. But it's just me.
So you're, for the traffic study, you need to watch, is that attorney bailing? Because I couldn't hear.
Yeah, attorney bailing. Correct. Drop it down, just listen it all together after we figure out what we want to do. Could I have a motion to the 23rd, please?
Mr. Chairman, we got in case number Z-17-38, Warren Place LLC, for a comprehensive permit to develop a traditional-style building containing 40 rental units, including 10 rent-restricted units and 38 parking spaces on the premises numbered 54 to 56 Warren Avenue, 60 to 62 Warren Avenue, and 118 to 120 Oak Colony Avenue. I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing to May 23rd of 2017.
Say it. On the motion, standing in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Come on.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to the 23rd.
Standing in, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.